Well, good evening and welcome everyone to the July eleventh, twenty twenty-two Toowalton City Council Work Session. We have two items in the session tonight. We'll start off tonight with the Parks Bond Survey Results and Next Steps. I think that's Ross and Rich.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. We're here tonight to talk about our, continue our Parks Bond conversation, and we are joined, of course, by our consultants, John Horvick and Clark Worth, and we are also joined to help with presentation, Emma Gray and Trevor Owens, who are on the call as our citizen stakeholder committee members to wrap up the presentation. So we will go ahead and show the presentation and John and Clark will talk about the details of the recent statistically valid phone survey that we conducted.
I'll start it off and then John is going to do most of the talking. We were asked to tap public opinion one more time to get a temperature reading on a couple of things. One, to find out if the economic bad news recently that with inflation, et cetera, has undermined voters' support for a toilet measure. And second, to test the popularity of the specific priority projects that have been identified by your community leadership group. D H M Research was able to conduct another telephone survey in June, and John will share the results. So again, these are the most recent results that we have available.
Yeah, thank you, Clark. So I'm going to walk through here first methodology and then to go through the results. I love, I believe, time for some Q and A at the end, so probably save questions for that. Except for if I'm just not being clear about something in particular around methodology, you know, jumping right away if you got something around clarity, but I think we have a little bit of time for, for questions at the end. This is a survey of Toowalton voters. Sample size of three hundred. We reach people through multiple different approaches nowadays. Folks want to be contacted in different ways, and so we accommodate that. So this is a a combination of both traditional telephone calls with the live interviewer. You're probably familiar with or someone rings you up, reads you the survey and you, you have a conversation, like you answer the questions orally, and then some folks are sent a link to take the survey on their smartphone. They could just take it right there and it's, they can also throw that link to their computer, laptop, tablet, whatever. But typically, younger people will want to participate by text and folks who are older will still prefer a live call and because those differences exist, we, we want to make sure we accommodate the community and reach people multiple ways. This was just conducted in June, so it sold on very fresh numbers. Took about eleven minutes to complete on average. We work to make sure that the sample is representative of what we think that the turnout will be in November twenty twenty-two election. So by age, gender, political party, those key ones to match that November twenty-two expected turnout. So this is not a survey necessarily of all adults in Toowalton or folks who voted in the main primary, but it's really trying to do our best we can to get a snapshot of the opinions of those who are likely to turn out in the November election. Margin of error is five point five percent. As we go through this, as things don't add up to a hundred percent, that's going to be due to rounding. Let me go next. So these are just some key takeaways to keep in mind as we go through this, and I'm going to show you all the numbers that back it up. First, Toowalton voters are modest, modest, moderately optimistic. You'll see what I mean by that. We sort of track this with the classic right direction, wrong track question, but Toowalton a little bit less positive than it's been in the past, but more positive than other communities today. So, you know, moderately positive. A majority say that they're going to support the twenty-five million bond as we presented it to them. And then it goes up to sixty-one percent when they just get a little bit more information about it, including the key projects that's going to be funded and the cost of the typical household. And that's really that sixty percent, sixty percent threshold is really sort of a key number for a survey like this. Voters are very favorable towards the projects that this bond would fund, and you're really going to see that. I'd say particularly the east-west trail corridor through every round of research that we've done. Focus groups, surveys, even research prior to this sort of most recent effort, those trail connections have been the highest priority and we see that here too. Young voters are more enthusiastic about the bond. It probably has something to do with their interaction with parks. It's not that older folks are negative towards the potential bond, but sure, there's more enthusiasm with younger voters. Because this would be on the ballot in a general election, that's probably okay. This, we're going to be on the ballot. It's saying a primary, special election, that'd be more concerning to us as the profile of voters is much older in special elections or primary elections than we see in a general. And then messages that focus on community and quality of life are the most convincing reasons to support. Well, you'll see that in the data too. So here we tested how they feel about the community, how they feel about the bond, how they feel about the projects and a little bit around messaging as well. Why don't you go next? So just general mood, go on. So this is the classic question, I think, since Toowalton heading in the right direction or they off on the wrong track. Right now, fifty-four percent said that things are heading in the right direction. That's more than double the percentage of folks who say that things are on the wrong track at twenty-one percent. That number can be difficult to interpret out of context. But you'll see in some recent surveys that we've done in communities in Oregon in the last several months, the fifty-four percent is a darn good number. So compared to Benton County where we, where we were recently doing some survey work, forty-one percent said that that county was heading in the right direction. City of Salem, we did a survey there a few months ago, just eighteen percent of folks said that City of Salem is heading in the right direction. In a recent statewide survey, just eighteen percent of Oregonians said that the state was heading in the right direction. In some survey work early this year in the city of Portland, just nine percent of Portlanders said that Portland was heading in the right direction. So fifty-four percent, why go next? We can sort of see across time. So these are just some recent surveys going back to twenty seventeen. So in twenty seventeen, the right direction number was seventy-six percent. That's sort of on the left side in that green line. And, you know, people are feeling more negative across the country, across Oregon, across the metro area and in Toowalton as well. So it's just part of the our politics, part of the economy, it's the COVID crisis, it's all sorts of things that have made people feel more negative. And you're Toowalton is, is part of that too, although, you know, so it is down compared to it was before. But relatively speaking to other communities, you're in a strong position. And so it's a, I think I'd read this as a glass half full sort of result. But within a context where people are broader context where people are pretty negative about government. So why don't you go next? So now we got straight into the bond. So go ahead, next. We, we gave people something very close to what the, the bond, the ballot title would be. And so that's the language on the left. There's very little information. Of course, there's very little information on your ballot. But we, we did our best to, to match language which we think could feasibly be on the ballot using the required language with the constitutional limits as well as the word limit count. So the language was Sheldon, the city of Toowalton issued up to twenty-five million dollars in general obligation bonds for parks, trails in Toowalton River access. If the bonds are approved, they would be payable from taxes and property and property ownership that are not subject to the limits of section eleven, eleven B, Article eleven of the Oregon Constitution. All that language is required. So that's what we asked, and it's important to interpret the results in that context because that language could be tweaks them. But we begin with fifty percent of voters saying, yeah, I'd support that. And thirty-nine percent saying, no, they're not there. I always want to pay attention to the certain answers. So those who said they're certain about yes or certain to vote no based upon that with the, that information, and you'll see that that certain yes is nineteen percent and that certain no is twenty-three. I wish it were the other way around, but it's going to get better here in just a second. So we begin with a bare minimum fifty percent sort of level of support. Eleven percent leverage percentage point advantage on the yes. So that's, that's, those are positive results, not overwhelmingly positive, but, but, but okay. Now, why don't you go next? We give people then just a little bit more information. So think of this as sort of the summary language that would be part of the bond on the ballot. We told people the bond measure would improve parks citywide. Construct a new trail corridor connecting major community destinations. Create a new place for public access to the Toowalton River and fund new and improved sports fields in partnership with the school district. If passed, a typical household would pay an additional eighty-eight dollars per year in property taxes. So we gave them a little more information about what it's going to fund. And importantly, we told them how much it's going to cost a typical homeowner. Now, we get up to fifty-nine percent support. Now, the opposition, the no, has stayed at thirty-eight percent. So basically, we took all those don't know, is there a lot of those don't knows and moved them into yeses? So now there's a twenty-one percentage point advantage on the yes side here versus the no. And look at that certain yes, it went from nineteen percent to thirty-two percent. Now we're looking pretty good, pretty good. I still, I still would like to see sixty percent, but we're going to get there in just a second. So I didn't go to the next slide. So just to give you a little bit of census of demographics, just by party, by gender, and whether folks have children in the household or not. These are the demographic groups where we saw the greatest increase from that initial test, which was just the, the title to that more informed test with a little bit more information about the projects that it would fund and the cost. We saw, you know, a ten-point increase among Democrats, a twelve-point increase among Republicans. You know, not getting to a majority support among Republicans, but you know, forty percent is not bad. And then you see fifty-seven percent for non-affiliated, and you can see sort of the growth among men and women. And then those with children, without children, those without children, a little bit less supportive, probably use parks a little bit less, also tend to be a bit older. Let me go next. So now we say a little bit more information about the bond projects, and then we wanted to sort of tease out which one of these do voters feel most positive about? And are there any that they feel negative about? They could inform the bond package, I suppose, the cost of informed communications, what's highlighted. What's really the thing that you want to stand out in the ballot title, for example? So we asked about the east-west corridor along Nyberg Creek. A new place to access the Toowalton River near downtown and more sports field made available citywide. And this is on a scale, knowing this is just making more positive about the bond or negative about it. You know, the positive are in the blue there, and then the much more positive is in our dark blue. And we can see that all three of these projects have, well, let's see, east-west corridor, you're at sixty-eight percent. River access were at, what is it, fifty-nine percent more positive? And as well as for more sports fields, fifty-nine percent more positive. So the east-west corridor is, has the both, both the most overall positivity at sixty-eight percent, but also the strongest, most positive. And again, as I've mentioned, you know, that finding of that valuing the trail connections, the passing trails that connect the community have been a consistent priority across the phases of research, and it is here too as well. So, so people like what this could buy. And that's, that's, that's what we need them to want. So why don't you go next? And just a little bit about some demographic differences where there's some that are notable. What I, what I'd call out here, so these are, you have party and you have age, and then the, the dark blue is feeling positive about trail corridors, the light blue feeling positive about sports fields, and then the gray feeling positive about river access. Thing I just note is that the trail corridors are the most positive across these R's and non-affiliated voters. It's the most positive among younger voters, middle-aged voters, and tied with sports fields for older voters. So there's that consistency for those. And then you see some variations with sports fields and river access, but it's probably that consistency for the high marks for trail corridors across some key demos we wanted to call out there. So why don't you go next? Then we said, hey, which one of these is the most important to you? Right? So not whether you feel positive or negative about them, but if you had to choose one that you feel is the most important, what would you pick? And this just validates what we saw before, which is that, that, that trail corridor, new trail, east-west trail corridor is the, is the priority. So there's some validation there. And why don't you go next? So after people learn more about the specific projects, it, we didn't increase much, but we marched up a little bit more and now we're at fifty-nine percent. Excuse me, sixty-one percent support or folks who plan to vote yes, we're at thirty-four percent strong. So we're at what, a twenty-six percentage point difference between our no's and our yeses after they get a little bit more information. Now we're looking, we're looking pretty good. So go next. Just a little bit of messaging, one thing just to note, without even going into all of these. So we asked about these sorts of arguments or persuasive statements we might make about the bond and said, hey, is that a good reason or, or poor reason to support the bond? Before you pay attention to any of them, just note that all the things we tested do well. So there's lots of arrows in the quiver, right? We don't have to just pick one message. There are some different ones. But if we, if we do tease them out, the one that did best was access to parks, trails and natural areas makes our community a great place to live. It does have trails in there, which is probably important. And some of the previous first research we did, connections to natural areas was a real positive, and we have forty-seven percent. That's a very good reason to support the bond. Another thirty-six percent, so it's a somewhat good reason. So we're at eighty-three percent there. That's a real winner of a, of a statement. Then the east-west trail corridor, really strong as well. So trails is in both of these. Partnerships with the school district for sports fields, also a good one. You drop a little bit now, we're at the thirty-nine percent on that very good. And then support parks and trails all across the city. Again, a real, a real winner, but it is a little bit less than some of the others. The, the takeaway here is that people are, once they learn about the, the bond, they're, they're behind it. They like the project that, that it funds, and there's lots of positive things we can say about it that are persuasive to the community. So go next. So some of these things do okay, but you do see the drop off. And this sort of ties back to where the priorities were as well. So a little bit less persuasive on the river access. Not that it's bad, just, you know, see that drop off. That's those top two messages, both have to do with river access. And then that third one down, traffic congestion is a major problem. A new trail gives people an option for walking and biking. We tested sort of frames of trails in a couple of different ways. We know that traffic, traffic congestion is the, so the biggest issue with Toowalton voters. We wanted to see if framing it up that way works, and it does work. It's just some other ways to talk about trails work even a little bit better. And then this message around the bond projects were identified by nearly a thousand community members, really showing that there's a, there's been outreach. It hasn't just come, this isn't just a top-down process. Your community members, your neighbors have involved with this, that does okay too. But again, it's the least effective of the ones that we tested. So there's other practical things, outcome-based things that people responded to more than, than process. So next. So then we give people these reasons to support. We tested one more time, and you'll see that support held steady at sixty-one percent. And opposition stuck all the way through sort of that thirty, what, thirty-five to thirty-nine percent. So there's people who were opposed, didn't move at all, but we do see that these people who are sort of undecided, they became more supportive. And then look at this, if you pay attention to the certain yeses, we go from nineteen percent to thirty-five percent. We definitely, that's a real positive finding. Next. We looked at what we called swing voters. These are voters who are either somewhat support, some let her pose, or don't know on that initial test. So Q two in the, in the survey. And you can see that the swing, all our swing voters, they like kind of everybody else. As soon as they got a little information about what it's going to fund and what it's going to cost, you know, they, they, they became more positive, and then they jumped up a little bit more when they got those messages. So we know that we moved, we moved those people on the fence with the information, and I think, I think that's it. Oh, just some key demos, just to call out that our strongest support, our supporters tend to be a little bit younger, particularly in that middle-aged group. This is the group probably most likely to have kids in the household is my guess. More support among Democrats, no surprise there. And then women, quite a bit more supportive than, than men, although men are above fifty percent. And I think that is probably the last one. Yeah. So with that, I think Clark wanted to say a few things, and then we're happy to entertain any questions you all have.
Yeah, briefly, I think you could tell from John's comments that we were heartened by the results. You know, we would put a smiley face on this. To start with, voters' outlook hadn't changed. We were, wanted to find out if the news about the economy had changed their outlook, and it really hasn't. It's been unchanged since the prior survey that we did. A second thing is we wanted to test those priority projects, and John showed you your leadership group and the community is on point with those, able to identify projects that resonate very well with voters. And it's all the projects. It isn't, isn't just one of them, although there is a little bit of a ranking which puts the trails at the top. The sharper messaging that was developed, all tested well. John showed you that too. We know which the messages are that work the best, but having some specifics, it's general quality of life, but it's also some specifics about the projects. One interesting thing, if you looked at opposition, the opposition overall didn't change. Was around thirty-five percent to thirty-eight percent. And in Oregon, remember around twenty-five to thirty-five percent of voters vote no on any money measure. So that we're not too far out of that realm here. But we, if you looked at the projects, it wasn't opposition to the project. So it's just about the money. Money is the only thing there that is the reason to oppose. If this, if these projects were free and they didn't have to vote a tax increase, there would be more support from that group too. The messaging all worked, but what we can see when John showed you that it was between fifty percent and sixty-one percent, what did it take to get there? It took public education. So we know that this will require, a measure will require a public education campaign. It will require leadership from council. It will require work at the grassroots level, which I know there has already been some work developing. So all of those things will be essential to get a measure passed to make that, cover that gap between fifty percent and sixty-one percent, which you'll need in November. With that, I think we're back to, back to Ross, but.
Well, thank you. Now I'll, I'll turn it over to, that was a great presentation. Thank you, John. Thank you, Clark. Turn it over to Emma Gray and Trevor Owens. Both were members of the Parks Bond Advisory Stakeholder Committee, and they're going to talk a little bit more in detail about what this, what this potential funding measure would support and how the money could be allocated. So turn it over to, to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ, so much. And thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Ross mentioned, Trevor and I both were part of the Parks Bond Stakeholder Committee that met multiple times over the course of, over a month and really carefully weighed and listened and debated and collaborated and learned. And at the end of that process, really pretty unanimously came up with this package that you see before you, that you've seen before. We just wanted to refresh your memory now that you have the context of the new survey to kind of place these numbers around, right? So what you see here is the slide that encapsulates the project or the proposal as a whole. So you can see there in the middle that the Stakeholder Committee landed on a twenty-five million dollar bond. Of course, we think that we could spend even more money, but this seemed like a very realistic ask for voters. And it is really gratifying to see that the data is kind of holding that up. The other thing you'll notice is that a lot of these categories, trail connections, new river access, athletic fields, upgrades, they are all, they're not identical, but they're all prioritized and they are all similar so that all of the people who have a sense that one of these is their priority hopefully will be able to see those needs reflected in the projects that get funded. Trail connections, of course, which continues to be super high, river access, athletic fields. Trevor's going to talk a little bit more to refresh your memory of what those might look like exactly. But you can see the numbers there, trail connections. These are all estimated, right? Because we know that municipalities need flexibility around funding and projects and unpredictability. But this package overall allows for approximately four point five million investments in trails, four million investment in that expanded river access, seven million for the athletic field improvements, five million for what we were calling upgrades, three point five million for natural area upgrades and one million for play equipment improvements. And as I mentioned, Trevor's going to highlight a little bit of those top three. Those are the real highlights for voters as well, but I would be remiss if I didn't pull out also just a reminder to council that that upgrades section, that five million dollar section includes a couple of projects that the Stakeholder Committee really wanted to highlight. And that includes the project of Stone Ridge Park Upgrade and the Veterans Plaza, which I believe is on the schedule tonight for you to hear more about. And while you all know that there are other funding options, there's other potential streams and Frankenstein things that can be stitched together. The reality is that all of these investments and all of these incredible growth opportunities for our community will be less likely and perhaps more in jeopardy without the possibility of a dedicated Parks Bond. And so we are really hopeful that, that you will consider putting it on the ballot. I'd like to turn it over to Trevor to highlight just a little bit and remind you what the Stakeholder Committee really talked about when we considered these top three signature projects. Trevor?
Thank you, Emma. I really appreciate it. And honestly, I have to thank Ross too for, and everyone for bringing me into the group because I absolutely had a great time doing it, meeting everyone that was in the group. Just a swath of folks from across Toowalton, including one of my former players, which was awesome. But specifically, we first were to talk about the new river access and what we were looking at there. There are a couple of points to, to bring across. Right now, what we have is a driveway right into the river, which works for a lot of things, but it does not work for ADA access, and that's a really big thing. We wanted to point out was that the ADA access would be a piece of this, so it gets more people into the river that may not have had access to it before. In addition to that, we're talking about economic vitality and visitors or bringing more visitors into the area, which of course helps the economics of the community. And it brings more people in and more people spending money in the area, which is what we want. Let me make sure here. Oh, in addition to that, we also brought out that this could also be used as a educational, for educational purposes, bringing kids to the river to see plants in their natural habitats and to work with animals and plant life in that natural environment or more natural environment in a way that they can interact with it. And the next slide. The trail connections. This was a big talking point because there's trails across Toowalton already. But some of the things that we were talking about specifically was the east-west connection. And I have to say right off the bat that I'm a big proponent of this because I live right next to Atulati Park, and I have no way to get across the bridge necessarily without a car. So it's a big thing for me because I would actually like to get downtown without a car. In addition to that, we're talking about all of these alternative types of transportation. So you're talking about electric vehicles such as the electric bicycles or non-electric bicycles or other electric type vehicles like that and bringing those, those people from having to use their cars off of the roads and onto our trails instead. And the next slide. And this one, if you don't know who I am, then if you talk about soccer and, and youth soccer in Toowalton, you're probably talking about me and what I've done in the last twenty years or so. And the reason this is a big thing right now is that we're finding that there are a lot more kids right after COVID's getting out. A lot more kids and families want to be not just in the parks, but they actually want to be in a community environment with other folks in their community with their kids playing sports. So we're not just talking about basketball and, and baseball and, and football and soccer, but all these other sports that are on the verges also are the edges of athletic sports and the outdoors. Orienting, trailing, and things like that all fall into those categories. But what we have right now is a situation where we don't have enough fields for the number of kids we have. So it is, it is compact, to say the least. So this partnership with the, with the school district will open up new areas that relieves the city at least from having to buy more land. So we won't have to buy more land. We don't have to find new land. My club in particular cannot even find any, any big pieces of land, and we've been trying to just to build sports fields. So this partnership is a big deal for every kid that's coming through all the way up through high school. Because at least my programs have all the way, we support kids all the way through high school. It's a chance for community building and on the far end of those athletic fields is the economic vitality piece, which is if we do have these fields, then we are able to support tournaments of larger sizes. That brings more people from outside of the community into our community. So a, a big example of this might be the Mount Hood Challenge, which is no longer at Cook Park because the Cook Park couldn't support the tournament and the rest of the people using the park. because the Cook Park couldn't support the tournament and the rest of the people using the park. So they don't have enough space anymore. So all of those thousands of people that were coming into Cook Park and then the Tiger, for instance, is spending many, are not doing that anymore, or at least not this year. That's something we would like to bring here to 12th and two. Anything else? I don't have another slide.
Yeah, thanks, Trevor. I just want to add too, as kind of like to put bookends around that. The other thing that became really clear to me as a member of that Stakeholder Committee that I, I really didn't confidently know going in, but I confidently knew coming out on the other side was that there is a huge commitment amongst stakeholders in this community to engage in the grassroots efforts and the messaging that the consultants were talking about, to make this a reality and to really help voters get to that place where they have a little more information and they really can see the value of a bond improving our quality of life. So I just wanted to make sure that council knew that, that we have a pretty large group of constituents that the stakeholders are representing. And we can't wait to, you know, put our money where our mouth is and really start to promote this as a positive thing for our communities and give voters the information. Thanks, Ross. I think it's you next.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you, Trevor, for all your time. And so council, at this point, we would, we would request direction on moving forward. And would, would appreciate any questions, comments you have for, for any of the presenters tonight. And if, if staff should proceed, we would bring a resolution back to council on August eighth. And we would just need that direction from you this evening.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Councilor Brooks?
Well, I have, I have a comment and, and more than a question. I just wanted to first thank the, the consultants for helping us understand the data really well. I feel like how you explained it helps me to understand where the people are at and especially around what their concerns are, what we need to do to educate them. And it just feels very, very clear and simple. And, and it ties in really nicely to me with the work that we've done in the past with our Moving Forward Bonds. And I love that we're doing the same kind of branding. It just feels really comfortable to me. And I think that the community has built trust in, in that kind of approach. So I just wanted to just appreciate that. And then from the volunteers and the leadership through the parks. And I just have had such an amazing weekend in the parks with Viva Twalton, the concert in the park. I'm looking forward to the concert on the commons at the lake this Wednesday. And have also been attending more pole center activities, which is also part of our Parks Department. I think sometimes we get ourselves outside, but we have great services for our seniors and for all kinds of people that want to learn more and do things together in community at the pole center. So just a big thank you to the leadership from Emma and Trevor and all the rest of the people that participated on the Parks Advisory Board and for all the time and energy that you put in to the Parks Advisory Board. And then for me, I am very supportive of this and am happy to be part of the solution and reaching out to people in constituents and educating and have no problem being outspoken and engaged with communities. So hopefully it can be an asset in the conversation. I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilor Pratt and then Councilor Reyes.
And yeah, thank you, everybody, for putting all the work into this and making our job a lot easier. I have a couple of quick questions first on the projects you have. The first one is on this east, the Sniber Creek Trail. And I'm just wondering if you can explain that a little to us. Would it go from like Boons Ferry to Brownsbury Park? And just, and then, because that would kind of make a loop with the other trail behind Cabela's. So I'm just wondering what the vision is for this trail.
Thank you, Councilor Pratt. The, the committee dug into a couple of potential trail corridors in the community. And the trail corridor, corridor that jumped out at the committee is a, is a huge need in our community. And that's, that's the Nyberg Creek Trail. And that extends from currently, the city owns an easement to build a trail essentially from the east side of Interstate five across all the way to sixty-fifth on the south side of the Nyberg Creek Corridor. And in addition to that, the trail easement extends down south from, on the, on the east side of I-5 down to Sager. So from Nyberg Creek. And so it creates essentially a loop that allows, would allow people to extend essentially into, into Brownsbury Park from Sager and actually would connect the, the Stone Ridge neighborhood and the apartments just north of Stone Ridge neighborhood to that new trail corridor. And, and so, so the committee really saw that as a, as a high value area for connectivity. And, and so those are the easements that the city currently owns.
Oh, that's wonderful. And then, oh, this is on the boat ramp. And then I know they're just renderings, but will, is the intent to have access for kayaks and small boats?
Thanks, Councilor. Yes. So the intent is that these funds would be used to create a brand new water access point that is a water access point for, for paddlers of all types, kayakers, canoe, stand-up paddle boards. It's also an access point for people who want to access the water that can't physically access the water now because we don't have an ADA accessible access point. Further, it also provides, as, as Emma and Trevor mentioned, there is a, a place then for education to happen, watershed education, river health education. And then also built in, in the conceptual conversations and ideas that there is a terrace stepped way down to the river. And in those terraces, in those different terraces, there are native plants that do some natural filtration that currently does not, is not available to us in a, in a typical boat ramp. And so we feel like there's potential here for this to really be a model project for how to create an ADA accessible water access point, but also as a place where we can demonstrate how, how natural filtration happens in a riparian area and, and teach our community about that same time.
Well, that's great. And I guess my last thing, it's more of a statement, but I noticed on this, it seemed like when we first heard from the community that they were really supportive of funds for deferred maintenance, which we do have in this bond, like outline budget. And, but this last survey, doesn't seem that question was asked. So I'm very impressed that we got, you know, over sixty percent results without including that question or mentioning that. I think that really helps show that there's a willingness out there. So I'm fully in support of this and I'm glad that we have, it looks like a good team to help outreach and educate the community too.
Councilor Reyes?
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation and the information that you gathered. Just, I'm on board. I really liked the fact that we did this. I'm, I'm really pleased that we went back to, to, to ask questions and, and hear more from our community. And that way, it just gives us that confidence that people will also support us in November in being, being this a positive thing for our community. I'm, I'm curious because I will be talking to our, my, some of my constituents are only Spanish speakers. So I will be talking about this in, you know, kind of letting them know. And, and just because I speak Spanish, that doesn't mean they don't vote. They do vote. They just prefer Spanish. So I was, did you do this in Spanish as well? Or was this just done in English? That was my question.
Thank you, Councilor S. So this, the projects in our, in our system, our Parks Recreation System Plan, these specific projects came from that work. And in that Parks Recreation System Plan, we, we did extensive outreach in Spanish, both in person and in writing. Additionally, with our Parks Recreation Equity Inclusion Plan that we developed last year, extensive, extensive outreach and engagement was done in Spanish with our community members to talk about priorities and investments. And one of the, one of the key areas of, of investment of, in this bond is about equity and access. And so where we see some, some of these dollars being spent is where we see the intersection of, of our, our, our Spanish-speaking community and where we see the lowest income portions of our community and making investments in those portions of our community. Additionally, and as Trevor Owens talked about, the athletic field expansion in partnership with the, with the Twalton Tiger School District is, is all about access and equity and ensuring that any child who wants a place to play, either on a team or unstructured, that they have a place to play. And, and so this helps, helps accomplish that. So that's, that's a sort of a long-winded response to your question.
Right. I understand that one. But was it text to online or phone that you all did, a three hundred that you collected? Was that also done in Spanish or was it all English?
This survey was all, yeah, this survey, this survey was all in English. Yeah, yep.
Right. In case I'm asked, because I don't want to say, oh, yeah, it was done in Spanish as well. And then they say, I never got it. And, you know, so that's why, that was my question. Okay. The other one, can you, can you clarify a little bit? I, I thought I heard it and I want to make sure I heard it correctly. On, on your slide twenty-five or, yeah, of the presentation, you gave a different kinds of where the money is going to go to. And then it had, you mentioned something about the veterans and also the Stone Ridge Park. Can you please repeat that just so I can understand what the, is that going to be something separate from these projects? Or is that part of the, all these projects? I, I, I didn't understand what you were saying. I think it was Emma who was, who was trying to, who was presenting. Can you please help me understand that slide again?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll let Ross, you know, pop in if I mischaracterize anything. But the category of upgrades, that's called upgrades to existing parks, that includes Veterans Plaza because that is currently proposed to be constructed at the lake around the commons and Stone Ridge Park because it's an existing park, but the project would involve those huge upgrades to it. And the commute, the stakeholder, and the reason we want to highlight those also is to let council know that that particular category grew as the Stakeholder Committee did their work in no small part because of the priority that that group of citizens placed on those two projects. We really wanted a bond to be able to allow council to realize the investment that's already been put into those projects. And so that was, you know, originally that category was smaller. And most of the committee members really felt that we needed it to be larger so that those two projects could be prioritized.
Right. And I, I was just thinking about it because a lot of these families are younger. They have little ones. They're, you know, trails, they might walk with their kids and, and do the trail walk. But, you know, they do want like playground stuff, like, you know, slides and swings and all the activities that have little ones come together and, and kind of interact with other, other kids. Like, so I was just, that's, is that what the play equipment is, the one million dollar?
Well, it's interesting because, just like with so many things, sometimes when you're trying to categorize things, they overlap, right? So the one that can play equipment would be, and Ross can probably speak to this, is specific improvements that are from that list, I think, that in, at different parks that are really narrowly playground equipment. But for example, the Stone Ridge Park Upgrade has a ton of play equipment as part of that upgrade. That is, that is encapsulated in our proposal under the upgrade category, not the playground category.
Okay. Thank you. Think, no, it makes sense. I, I wanted to be clear. So when I'm asked, I, I'm able to explain it.
Yes.
In, in a better way. So thank you very much. Yeah, that's, that's all. Thanks.
Councilor Sacco and then Councilor President Grimes.
Thank you to everybody who did so much work on this project. And I appreciate the extra effort to go back and do the extra survey. And I'm so pleased with the numbers. Very excited. Special thanks to Trevor and Emma for being here today to present. I just wanted to add that the, the committee that came together was very diverse. And so we, we, we did have a wide variety of people from different corners of, of the group of our community, including river keepers. Trevor was one of, of a few sports advocates that were on the committee, including football and baseball as well. We had young voters, aging task force, business community members, parents with young children, old children, and so older children. So I just kind of wanted to state that, to say that we have, but between all of us, we have a lot of outreach out there, capabilities across many different groups. So I feel so confident in our ability to pass this, to pass this ballot measure. And I'm very supportive of that. I know that's not a surprise. But listening to some of the, some of the comments, Councilor Reyes, thank you so much for bringing up the Spanish-speaking aspect. And I think that may be an area that we are missing as part of our outreach group. So thank you very much for that. Your comments are always so valuable. And I really appreciate you bringing that up because I think that that's an area that we really need to bring in. And I also wanted to mention that Nyberg Trail Project also provides safe access from that, that part of our underserved community to Fred Myers, I believe, was my understanding, Ross. And so it's a, it's a whole nother transportation option for that underserved community that maybe has to take a longer route to walk or a bus to get to and from places. But that is a great trail connection to get to the grocery store. For some people that might not have cars or have to share cars, it's a, it's a, it's another great option. So I just wanted to point that out. And if I misquoted that, Ross, please let me know. And that's it. Thanks again. I really appreciate it. And I look forward to continue working on this project. And hopefully we can move it forward.
Councilor President Grimes?
Thank you. Excellent presentation. And the working group on this project, so impressive. My gosh, you guys could work at the research firm. Very impressive. I just had a couple of questions. First of all, I was wondering, Ross, could you maybe sort of mock up what that Nyberg Creek Trail could look like and maybe send it out later on? Even if it's just sort of a Sharpie on a map so that we have a little bit better, at least I have a better sense of like the beginning, the terminus, kind of what the loop would look like. So that is really exciting. And I often drive by that big wetland that is in there and think, wouldn't it be lovely to have some sort of even, you know, like a viewing platform or something? But if we have a trail that would go up around the, I guess, southern edge, that could be really neat. But I'd like to just have a little better understanding. That would be super terrific.
Absolutely. We'll certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you. And it can, literally, it can be the most rudimentary. It doesn't need to be anything fancy. My second question, and I think I asked this before, but I apologize. I can't remember what the answer was. What is the sunset on the transportation bond? I'm just curious.
It was another five years. So we're about, we're five years in right now.
Yeah, it started in twenty eighteen and it's a ten-year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. And then I have a question for DHM Research. We had about, in the presentation, I think there was 3.5 million in there for acquiring park and other properties. That makes sense. Did we, was that part of a test? Did we pull that particular element?
No, we, we, we pulled, what we saw is what, was what we pulled, which is the, the trail corridors, the sports fields and the river access. So we, we don't from this have a read on how much more that might increase support for the bond. We limited to those, I think. Well, those are, those are key projects, but also things we had high confidence that would test well and wanted to believe would be highlighted in the, in the bond language or in the ballot language.
Okay, thanks. I just didn't know if I'd missed it or if it just wasn't in there. And then my last question goes back to a little bit about what we were just talking about. And Emma, you had chimed in on this and I appreciate that. But I know when we were doing sort of the triage of all the parks, that there was an awful lot of playground equipment and playground areas that were numbers, I think, like four and five being like the most serious in need of replacement, repair, upgrade. I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money. But is, is that enough money for all of the parks we have to do all of the playground and playground equipment update? Because I just remember it being an astronomical figure as far as things that needed to be upgraded, replaced, or to be made so that we could have differently able children be able to enjoy the, you know, the playground equipment as well. Because I know that was a big expenditure to get, you know, wheelchair swings and things like that, that lets all children participate.
Yeah. Thanks, Counselor. Yeah. So a, a universal access play structure that we actually do not have in Tuolton would be something that we would, we would look to install with, with these dollars. And and then, you know, the, the flexibility, I think that in, in direct engagement from our community on how, when and where in specific design elements is a key step in this. And so much like we did with the transportation bond and really ask the community over and over again, how we should invest the dollars is, is that, that's really in that specific investment area is what we would plan to do with those, with those dollars. So it would, a million dollars would, without having a specific design, a specific site, I can't give you a, a firm definition of what that, what that would build us. But the intent is, is to create an, an all-access, universal access facility that we currently don't have.
Right. Thank you. And, and that is something that I, that I do feel really strongly about is the fact that, you know, I want to be able to have those facilities here in the city and you know, really make sure that if, you know, moving forward with this idea and this concept, if we're fortunate enough to get the voter's support, I want to make sure that we big push and appropriate amount of money allocated to, you know, universal options at more than just one location in the city. So that would be really important. Hopefully, we can explore that. So thank you.
Councilwoman Hoyer.
Hi, thank you. Thank you to everyone's time and energy and love for our community that you've put into this, whether you live here or not, so staff and community members. And most of my questions have that already been clarified. But the one that I do wonder is, you know, like we, we've identified TTSD as, because we can't purchase land, you know, as partnering with them. And I just wondered, you know, I think if I remember right, it's eight plus million dollars worth of repairs for the parks. And I know that Stone Ridge was part of that. But I'm just wondering, and I don't need to know the specific names, but have you already looked at identifying braided funding partners for some of these other projects? At one point, I remember someone mentioning that other groups needed access to the river. I, I don't think it was the US Coast Guard, but someone, you know, like that for safety reasons and different things. And I'm just wondering if you've already thought about that and that helped you form the numbers because you were confident that maybe we could find funding in other ways.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, there are, there are several potential funding sources that we cannot obtain in, in any city in the state of Oregon without matching funds. And so these dollars, absolutely, we would use these dollars to leverage, to obtain outside grant dollars. And so there are several sources that we would look to do that with, including, for example, the water access point. There is a, there is a state boating and water access grant that we would seek. And so we would look to, look to obtain that money as well to bring that into the, into the park system in our local, our local, local park system.
Thank you so much. Super exciting.
Any other questions? Councilor Reyes.
Yeah. Thank you. She, Counselor Hiller just kind of made me want to just ask this question just because I'm just curious. Are there any other like park bonds or anything going on that Metro is, is gonna propose this, this coming November that you're aware of, Ross, like that are, you know, for, I don't know, I'm just curious about any, anything that kind of relates. I think you answered the question, but I'm just, I guess I'm wondering if are there anything that relates to what we're doing that would, I don't know, may jeopardize what we're trying to do right now with this bond? So are there, like, you're aware of, you know?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilor S. Yes. So as you're well aware, voters passed a Metro Parks Bond and Metro is currently distributing those dollars and we have, will be intending to bring back a final IGA to obtain local share, the local share grant for Metro. Those dollars will come to our city from that Metro Parks and Nature Bond. So we're anticipating that. Voters have already approved that. But there is an upcoming Metro Parks and Nature levy that will be on the November 22 ballot. Then my understanding is Metro Council has already approved or, or will approve soon that there is the potential for that. And so Metros throughout Metros park system, that levy goes to support operations and programs. And some of those programs are funding to local governments like ours.
I believe that's a renewal. It's not an, an additional amount. It's a renewal of an existing levy. And then the school district doesn't have anything on the ballot this November. The fire district doesn't have anything on the ballot this November. The educational school district, the ESD, Northwest ESD does not have anything. So as far as I know locally, other than the renewal of the Metro Levy, this would be it for our, for our voters.
So no libraries either? That's another kind of art stuff that people tend to. Okay, thank you.
Council Brooks, we gotta get going. So quickly, please.
Well, no, I just wanted to also just mention that one of the things I love about a bond and, and why I advocate for this kind of funding especially is because when there's other parks money available from things like Metro that we can leverage with matching funds. So it's really good for me. I like it because it's a responsible use of taxpayer money because we can stretch a $1 input that we have from a $25 million bond and stretch those dollars by incorporating collaborative work with Metro or with the state or with, even with infrastructure funding from the federal infrastructure bill. So I just, I think sometimes people think of it like pie, but this is like a way of stretching our dollars in our own backyard. And I just wanted to be really clear and I know that from talking to Ross, that he's been really thoughtful around all those kinds of options and and I'm also looking forward to learning more about funding options for exactly what Council President Grimes was talking about with our different ability kids and people with different access needs. So I'm excited to learn more about those kind of funding opportunities. And a bond I know will help us to meet those goals. So I appreciate the question, Counselor Reyes.
So we gotta move this along. We only have a little bit left. Go ahead.
Okay. One quick question. Does anybody remember the polling percentage we had prior to the transportation bond? I was just curious.
We can get back with you on, oh.
I, I can find it. I'll, I'll stick here for a few minutes to see if I can, I can pull it, throw it in the chat. We can Clark my no off top of the side.
We can get back with you on it.
Right. So I'm going to focus on the mechanics of this. So it sounds like council is in support of moving this forward. So on August 8th, what would you come back with? Because I remember we went two or three times over a ballot title and a description for the last, you know, the recently passed ballot measure. Are you going to be able to knock this out in one night?
Well, what we would bring back is the resolution. And that resolution would include the ballot title, which is the question, the caption and the summary. And then the explanatory statement and the notice of filing. And yes, we have full faith and confidence that we can put together a, a, all of that and have it for you on August 8.
Okay, because I'm just, what's the filing deadline with the state?
That would be, let's see, it's August the 18th, I believe. But that's not with the state, it's with the county.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, because I'm just concerned on, like I said, we, it took us two or three cracks for the ballot measure to get this done and ready in one night might be tough. Or I don't know what's allowed. If you can start circling it as soon as possible, once a city attorney or temporary attorney starts getting some ideas. Because I'd hate to be on the 8th and we're going round and round wordsmithing and we run out of time.
So my recollection may be a little different. I, so there were a number of work sessions before, but by the time that you gave us direction, then we brought back a resolution with that specific that we, and so we'll work with our, our city attorney, our bond counsel. So we've already scheduled, we have a time available with our bond counsel because there's very specific regulations about what it requires and how many words. And once you give direction tonight, it, we, we can put our heads together and, and, and circulate it. We happy, happy to circulate it next week.
I just want to make sure, you know, because it seems like there's a pretty unanimous commitment here that we can get it done on the 8th and not have it drag out and not be rushing to get it filed at the county at the last minute. All right. So with that, is there consensus among the counselors to direct staff to bring this back on August 8th, the resolution? So seeing nodding heads. Yep, looks like it's unanimous.
I will also say that if you aren't able to get around it and make a decision on August the 8th, we could schedule a special meeting in, before the August 18th deadline.
All right. Well, that brings us to our second item, sticking with Ross. It's the Ross Hoover and Parks Night. We move on to Veterans Plaza Draft Plan and Design Update.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. The Veterans Plaza. And we have, we have done some, some really great engagement work with our community to, to walk through a detailed process. So we are, we have been working with Shapiro Didway Design Firm. And Rich Mueller has been the project manager on, on the city side. And so Nate with Shapiro Didway and Rich Mueller are going to walk through the details of the Veterans Plaza design.
With that, Nate, go ahead and kick us off.
Great. Thanks for the introduction, Ross. Really appreciate it. Happy to be here. Hello to everyone. And we'll start our presentation with the overview of the process that we've completed in Phase 1 and thus far in Phase 2 of the project timeline. Phase 1's focus was on engaging with the community to develop the core themes, objectives, site selection and design criteria for this project. The duration was approximately one year, beginning in October of 2019 and lasting through June of 22, where it was submitted and approved by council. Phase 2's focus was to build upon the findings of Phase 1 and develop a preferred site design that met the community needs. These were determined through various community engagement opportunities. Duration for Phase 2 is approximately also one year. And the phase began in October of 2021 and is slated to be submitted for consideration this summer. Next. So I'd like to start off during Phase 1, a recap. Over 900 community members were engaged and participated in 20 involvement opportunities during this phase. The majority of people involved in this process were veterans or family members of veterans. The engagements included five focus groups, outreach events, including ones dedicated to engaging with the Latinx community, extensive media outreach, stakeholder advisory committees with nine of the 16 members being veterans, two community meetings and three surveys conducted, resulting in nearly 700 responses. And we'd like to note that all of the engagement of the Phase 1 and 2 were conducted in both English and Spanish. Next. So through the engagement and findings that we've completed that far, thus far in Phase 1, from 900 people in the 20 engagement opportunities from local veterans in the community, it was determined who and what the space should honor. It was also determined what the key themes and objectives for the project are, those being honor, experience, connection, shared values, engagement and timeless. Next. This community engagement and feedback, feedback also told us what the project is and what it is not. So community engagement told us that the space should focus on service, honor and recognition. And then it should be an inclusive space, welcoming to all. Engagement also told us that the space should not emphasize war or violence. It should avoid overwhelming, overwhelming information and facts, and it should not reference specific conflicts or people. Next. Once the community determined what should be honored and what the project's key themes and objectives were, five potential sites were identified and presented through a community meeting and an online survey. This resulted in Tuolton Commons being selected as the preferred site. Next. With the preferred sites selected, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee determined the criteria for the quantitative qualities of the site. The quantitative qualities include a gathering space for 30 to 50 people, intimate and passive spaces, seating for two to three people, space for solitude, space for personal storytelling, recreation space for activities, dedication area, interpretive elements such as art and informational resources, signage, parking and proximity to public transformation, transportation. This was the point of the process that Phase 1 was considered complete. Phase 2 began with a site assessment and extensive engagement with local veterans and community members to really help determine the project's qualitative attributes that can be translated into a site design concept and more of the physical components of the site. These attributes are documented in a community's needs assessment that we'll discuss in more detail later on. But through this information and initial community input, it was gathered and the site assessment information gathered. It, it was translated into three design concepts. And these concepts spatially represented the needs of the community. These designs were presented via a public survey and a website for, to gather additional input and selection of a preferred option. I'll pass it off to you, Rich. I think you're needed. I think you're muted.
Rich, you're on mute. You're on mute, Rich.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Nate. What I'd like to do is share some public engagement results with you. We're going to start with the survey results during phase two of the project. There were two surveys that were part of phase two. You can see this is the results of the first survey. We had just over 200. You can see over 70% were veterans or veterans' family members. The second survey, we had just under 100. And again, we were above 80% of the survey participants were veterans or veterans' family members. Tuolton residents were right around 90% of both surveys. And a couple of things we'd like to share here is the design options. So design option three, which Nate just shared with you, had 40%, design option two at 35%. So really took those two design options and combined the elements in those two to come up with the preferred design, which Nate's going to share with you in a couple of minutes. But there, there was really during this process, during the first phase and then identified by veterans and others in the second phase, the name memorial wasn't fitting. It wasn't fitting with the core themes and objectives. It, it wasn't necessarily fitting with the emphasis of honoring and, you know, recognition, recognizing all veterans in the community. And so we went and asked the community what they would prefer in the name. You can see here 60% approximately supported Veterans Plaza and just under 40% Veterans Memorial or Veterans Memorial Plaza. And once again, these surveys were heavy with 70 and 80% veterans taking them. We made sure to really do an outreach, engage veterans organizations and invade, and engage the veterans organizations in Tuolton and in our region. I'm going to share the phase two, the total community engagement. At this point in time, as we kind of wrap up the community engagement, we've had over 650 now, community members involved. They've had over 20 engagement opportunities. You can see some of the engagement opportunities there. And so with phase one and phase two, that gives us 1500, 1550 people that participated in over 40 engagement opportunities. Again, 70, 80% of them are veterans, 80 to 90% of them live in Tuolton. And what's going to be shared with the preferred design is the results of this outcome, community engagement, public involvement. Again, with an emphasis on veterans. And just, just to remind everyone, phase one was endorsed by the stakeholders committee. And T. Parker recommended it to council who accepted it. I'm just going to quickly share with you notifications. And so thousands of different notifications went out, social media, online emails, print information. And, and so these are just some of the notifications and ability to get the public information out there to engage our community, both residential and employment in this, in this project process. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ross.
Thank you, Rich. So we've, we want to talk a little bit about feedback and concerns we've heard. Even as we've completed this, this last phase and you saw that Rich just went over the numbers of, of folks we've connected with in our community and really listened to. And the design has really been informed by our community. We, we are still hearing some concerns and feedbacks. We wanted to talk about those with you today. First is the name. We've received some feedback that the name Veterans Plaza is, is, is not sufficient in that it should be called Veterans Memorial. And that, that shift in the name, as Rich said, really came about through listening to our community. And as we heard our community members, and I'd like to, I'd like to read one exact quote that we received in writing from a community member about the name. And this is part of the reason that sparked the conversation with our community about changing the name. So here's the quote. When I hear the term memorial, it has a certain context to it, that individuals are no longer living. To have a Veterans Plaza enables you to not only honor vets that have passed, but also provides recognition to living veterans as well as their family members. And so that, that is the type of comment that we heard that, that sparked us to put that question on the survey that you saw Rich just cover. The next question is about flags. And so we've also received some feedback about flags and that what we heard from our community was that there are, there is a need in our community for the ability to display a variety of flags, not just the branches of our, of our armed services. So in addition to the branches of our armed services, we heard that the state of Oregon, the VFW, the Gold Star Mothers, the National Guard, the CIA, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Sons of the American Revolution, the Merchant Marines and Prisoners of War and MIA flag, those should all be flown as well. And those are just an example of what we heard. So what we quickly realized through this process, this space needs to be flexible. This place, this space should be a place where whoever's holding an event in this space, they should have the ability to customize the flags to fit their event and their purposes. And so working with Shapiro Didway, the concept that we are proposing in this, in this presentation in the final report is that the flags are, are changeable. And so we're calling them event flags. The intent is that we would purchase flags, flags for all of the branches and many of the other flags that you heard me list off. And that when someone holds an event, they could, they could put up the flags that they're choosing. And then the last bullet here is public art. We've, we heard some comments about very specific concepts about what the public art should be in the space. And we, we, we heard competing desires about what the public art should be. However, we quickly realized we have a process for this. We have a, a city council appointed committee, the, the Parks, I'm sorry, Arts Advisory Committee, that, that does just this type of work. That, that those volunteers that you've appointed vet public art. And that they have a process whereby they have a call to artists and they have a rubric where they score the artist's art submissions. And that that seems like a very reasonable approach to how we decide upon the public art in this space as well. And so we just wanted to cover those feedback and concerns that we've heard in this presentation as well. So I'll turn it back over to Nate and Rich.
Nate, would pick it up here, please?
Definitely. Thanks. Thanks for all that information. That was great. So as mentioned earlier, a needs assessment was developed through community engagement, local veterans input. These needs were then processed and then physically manifested to create the preferred site alternative. The needs included a visual entry areas, gathering space, shaded areas, intimate group space, benches and tables, QR codes, storytelling area, pathway connectivity, active area, a water feature, public art, sustainable natural materials, native vegetation, to be simple and intentional and to be an inclusive space. Next. So with that information, provided in the needs assessment, along with the additional community input and the select, preferred selection by the community for design option three, a preferred, the preferred design presented here was developed. The preferred design is a fully accessible site and it includes the criteria defined by the needs assessment and physically represented with welcome signage, public art to be selected through the process probably mentioned by Ross, various sized gathering spaces, a dedication and story circle, a dedication area, yep, event space, Japanese cherry trees, plantings and native vegetation specifically, natural materials such as the basalt columns, the paving materials, various types of seating for larger gatherings and smaller intimate gatherings, a water feature represented with the reflection pool, shade structures and shade trees, event flags. Also previously mentioned, those are intended to be sleeved and capped so they can be flexible and interchangeable. A US flag, military branch insignia plaques. There would be seven of those and QR codes for access to information. Next. So that was kind of the core central space. And there's also two other components to the project. One would be an entrance at Seneca Street. Through the community engagement feedback, we found that a prominent and visual entrance at Seneca and Nyberg was important to help welcome and bring people to the site. The Seneca Street entrance includes pavers with the military information included, seating areas, public art, Japanese cherry trees and plantings, string lighting and QR codes for access to information. Next. The plaza at Nyberg Street includes a labyrinth done with paving materials, seating areas, Japanese cherry trees with plantings, pedestrian lighting and also QR codes for access to information. And I'll pass it back to you, Rich.
Thank you, Nate. The next steps for the project are, is council consideration of acceptance, July 25th or a future council meeting, construction documents. We have already been funded by council and then construction funding for the design. Excuse me, construction documents include that design and engineering and then funding for the actual construction project to build what, what you see in the preferred design here. And with that, council questions, discussion?
All right, questions? Counselor Pratt?
Thank you for the presentation and it's just amazing to see this come to fruition. I, I wanted first just to address the word memorial, because I know that's been a big concern. And I kind of looked into this and noticed that it seems there are some of these areas that are called memorials and, and many that aren't throughout our country. And I found one from Bates College in Maine, which is a school that's been around since 1863. And famous people like Robert Kennedy, Doris Kurtzwood, Goodwin have gone there. And how they described their, they call theirs Veterans Plaza. And I thought it would, it just kind of suited what we're doing here. They call it a small park to inspire thoughtful appreciation for the contributions and sacrifices of military veterans. And I felt like that really matched what you're doing here. And then my only question for you is, when you get, I appreciate the arts committee making the selection, but I'm wondering, when you get to these particular pieces of artwork in the plaza, if there's a way to have like a little ad hoc group of veterans to help give their perspective when the choices are made?
Absolutely, Counselor. Yes, fully, fully intend to ensure that the decisions are made in concert with our, our veterans in our community.
Counselor Sackland and Counselor Brooks?
Thank you. I am too very excited to see this come to fruition. I was on the Stakeholder Advisory Committee as a T. Park member and also as a daughter and wife of a veteran. And I just wanted to say thank you so much for doing a wonderful job with this project. I think the team showed that they are working through a lens of inclusion, which has been a priority for the council. And it, it shows that there's an understanding that these themes can be sensitive and triggering to individuals and groups of people. So I just wanted to thank you for creating a concept that it really tries to meet the needs for everyone in our community, which is, you know, no easy task. So thank you very much for that. And I also very much agree with Counselor Pratt's comments about including veteran voices when the arts committee looks at art installments for the plaza as well. So thank you.
Counselor Brooks?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I also wanted to acknowledge the contribution of Joe Lipscomb and all of the input that he's had on this. And I wanted to say today, because I believe today is his 90th birthday. So I just want to say happy birthday out there. If you're watching or watching in the future and knowing that we are all thinking about you as we end your sacrifice and service to our community and our country as we have this conversation. And I also wanted to tip my hat to our mayor. I remember when you first initiated this conversation and it was a stretch and it took a lot of vision and how are we going to pay for it and all those things. There were a lot of unanswered questions about how to bring this project to fruition. And it's been step by step and with Ross's really diligent leadership and amazing community outreach again. We have a really interesting design. And then I want to also say one thing about the arts committee just being the liaison and watching them do the process. Ross mentioned they go through the, the scale, but at the same time, like when we did the box wraps, they have thoughtful ways of reaching out to the community and having the community weigh in. There's veterans that have sat or sit on the arts committee of them itself. But I just wanted to reassure everybody that the arts committee has a practice, a long-held practice and a really big intention around inclusivity, especially and would, I don't think in any way would ever think to overlook the veterans in this conversation. So I just want to bring that forward because, and, and they have a really good eye for art. So there's that whole thing. And I guess I had a question. So there's, when you walk over through there currently, there's a lot of, of neat, of natural things that are there. So when we move living thing, do we transplant those things? And I know we'll have trees around the edges and part of me likes it because it opens up the view of the lake. But I also think about that existing trees and the existing plantings that are there and was curious about how we treat those items. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor. Yes, some of, some, some of what you see there would, would, would not survive sort of the removal. Others might. And, and in cases where we would have the ability to transplant some of those things, there are places in the, in the commons, at the lake of the commons that could use some new plants. So, so where those opportunities present themselves. I know our, our parks maintenance staff does an awesome job of taking care of that space. And I'm, and I'm confident they would look to, to save plants where, where they could. And then in addition to in planting new plants at this park, at this site, using our, our native, our native plant our native plant palette and our pollinator palette. And as you saw Shapiro Didway and Nate Nate's work, filling, filling in those planting spaces with with species that require less watering or very little watering is really the intent and thinking behind how we would plant the site in the future. And we heard that from our community.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Ross?
Oh, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
How much do the bricks go for?
We don't yet have a price.
Okay, I'm just, let me know when you know, because I want to know.
Other questions? All right, Council President Grimes.
Thank you very much for everyone's work on this. The design option number three. It's absolutely beautiful. Very thoughtful, very inclusive. Very touching. I just had, I had two questions actually. My first question is do, do we have adequate parking close enough to the memorial? That it's an easy distance for people to make the trek? And is there something as council that we could do if that needs to be expanded upon? Is there something we could do to help? And do we have enough? Well, I guess, yeah, adequate, close enough parking is, I guess, my first question.
Rich, do you want to answer this one? Rich knows the answer to this question. Well.
Okay.
Based on the parking that was identified for this space, we, we believe there's adequate parking. The city has multiple light lots in that area, the white lot, green, blue. Will identify drop-off locations in some of those turnarounds. I believe specifically Nyberg on the west side was identified. East, east side, Nyberg on the east side was identified as a drop-off location. But with the, with the four close proximity parking lots. We believe it's adequate. Now, like any event from Memorial Day and Veterans, Veterans Day. Yeah, there, there, when you, when, when hundreds of people twice a year are brought somewhere. That'll be a little more challenging, but like we do with the pumpkin regatta, sign areas. Open up areas, provide parking.
Yeah, I would think drop-off areas would be really important. And then a lot of ADA parking would be really important so that we ensure that everyone has access. Because, you know, when you're in design and you think of what seems like a short walk from parking to the memorial or the plaza rather. You know, it, it, you know, having seniors in my home and one of which is a veteran. Because I am the daughter and niece and cousin. Anyway, I could go on forever about veterans, but I think that's wonderfully important. But it is amazing how you look with different eyes when you think about covering a distance and something even as simple as from where a drop-off to the event is, it can become pretty daunting pretty quickly. So thank you for your care about that part. And then also I had a question about the flags. I saw from the rendering that we would have the One American Flag flying, I guess, always. And then there was an opportunity for flags and you said for different events or different honor area. Is the thought that we would have all of those additional flags flying all the time in addition to it, to the American flag? Or would they only be brought out at specific times? If that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor. Yeah, so focus on gatherings. And so when there are gatherings there. One of the things we heard as well, if you didn't hear in the presentation, was that we need storage, we need storage for things, podium, chairs. The ability to set up and take down for particular events. And so flags are one of those elements so that we would, if we have a gathering. Memorial Day, Veterans Day, there are a number of other days when we know groups like the VFW would love to use space like this. We would, we would open up that storage area, make all those flags available. And however that groups chooses to set up their flag, they can choose the, choose that on their own. And then, and then we would take those flags down and put the chairs away and podium away at the end of the event.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Pratt.
Oh, I just wondered if part of the design will be to have really good directional signs to get to that location because I would think this might attract people that don't live in our city and even people that live in our city sometimes have a hard time finding the comments.
Yeah, that's good, really good point. Thank you, Counselor.
Other questions? All right. All right, Ross and I talked about this already. One of the ideas I had when it comes to art was I know Lake Oswego rotates art out. So I put a little bug in Ross's head about the possibility of leasing art versus buying it and maybe rotating art out periodically. Right, having it being fixed because I think that's kind of keeps the place dynamic. And the second thing, we've all been hearing a lot about the controversy over the name as Council Pratt said. And I focused in on a Veterans Plaza that's right next to Fort Collins in Colorado. And it's called Veterans Plaza and it says right here dedicate to all US veterans who have served, are serving and will serve this great nation. The Veterans Plaza serves as a remembrance of the valor and sacrifices only made by our veterans, whether in times of war or times of peace. So as Matt, as Counselor Grimes says, that I know some veterans are not, are kind of annoyed that it's not a memorial, but I think the plaza is more inclusive. It remembers those who have fallen and those who are present day veterans and who will be veterans in the future. So and this is to be a place of contemplation and to think about those folks who have given a lot of their, you know, their livelihood in our lives in terms of being a veteran. So I think the Veterans Plaza name is good, I support it. It just, it takes a little bit of a mind adjustment. I know a lot of cities around this have memorials. But I look at those other cities' memorials and a lot of them are just, you know, walls and basic stuff. This is a nice plaza. This is a nice gathering place. Like I mentioned, a tight up place of contemplation versus just a wall with some people's names on it. This is going to be a very attractive memorial to all veterans. So I'm very excited with what your team came up with, Rich and Ross, and looking forward to moving forward on this. So you don't need any specific direction tonight, correct? Because it's going to come back up in the city council meeting and possibly July 25th or maybe later.
That's right, that's right, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. The next council meeting, we will bring back a resolution for acceptance of this, of this design.
All right. Anything else on this? Okay, seen none. That brings us up to our homework or if you will line up the rest of the meeting, our city council meeting. So I've got on my notes here, it's Counselor Sacco's turn to do the pledge. All right, then I've got Counselor Brooks will be doing the public health announcement. And then Council President Grimes will be doing the Science and Technology Scholarship Award Announcement. All right, any question on the, any items on the consent agenda? All right, with that, I'll now start the council roundtable at the time we have remaining. And so, Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some notes. Okay, so, oh, I actually have some notes and props today. I was you see that? I was with the Winnie Paul Center and we went to and I have a vest, which I'm very excited about, and I have glasses, but we went to the Wilsonville Transfer Station. And I don't know if other people know about the Wilsonville Transfer Station or not, but it's where they sort all of the recycling and non-recycling items and then ship it to where it needs to go. The good news is they have an amazing operation there. It's safe. They do tours. If you ever have a group of students or any other community groups, they're really excited about showing the tours. And the hard part is that 60% goes into the landfill and I forget, it's like 25 truckloads of dense-packed material go through there, leaves there every single day. So it's an amazing thing to go and see in person and just a reminder for people that recycle is the last. It's reduce, reuse, then recycle. So reducing use helps to not send tons and tons of refuse every day to our landfills and KJ Lewis and the operations manager, Steve Baker, were the people that gave the these six changes. So I just wanted to get that on people's radar and it's exciting to learn more about what's coming down the pipe. If you have more questions, feel free to reach out. Then I went to a first tier suburbs that I'm going to send the information out for, through the National League of Cities. And I want to thank Krista Nightingale from from Better Black and Kirk Ross, who leads our group. And that was really interesting, especially with the talks that we have around redevelopment. And different ways of thinking about using space. So they do, this organization sets up bike lanes or common areas. They use furniture that they print out and cut without any nails or anything. And create spaces and community to try it out to see if it would work. And sometimes they leave that up permanently. So it's really dynamic, interesting information. And a really interesting consulting group that everybody was excited about on the call. And then I know others will talk about this too, but I appreciate Ross Baker's leadership over at the Historical Society. Went to the Historical Society picnic and and ate tacos and it was great. We got to visit with everybody over there and they're really excited about their upcoming banquet. And then on the seventh, also the mayor was there. We presented the Wear Orange Proclamation to a meet and greet for Moms Demand Action. They've incorporated hundreds and hundreds of new volunteers into, and thousands across the state. But hundreds and hundreds in our own local chapter in Twelton. So there's a lot of people out there very concerned about reducing gun violence. And I was proud to champion and discuss what we've been doing here at the city. And I'm sure the mayor will say more on that. And then the eighth, mindfulness in nature with the Earthwise Crew, which was a wonderful talk done. And we walked through our parks, the slowest I've probably ever taken a walk and looked the most carefully I've ever looked at things. It was a beautiful meditation. And people were there to do things like help improve their sleep and slow down. And then finally, the ninth, well, the eighth, I was at a concert dancing with Counselor Reyes. And she taught me some zumba moves, which I'm not that good at. She was much better at. And it was a wonderful band, which also Cornelius Counselor Luis Hernandez, who I serve on the PAB with, is one of the musicians and so is his wife. So it was a great time and it was nice to see them in person. And then on the night, it was Viva Twelton. I know a lot of us were there. Personally, I'll just pick out, there are so many things to talk about. One thing was meeting. Ricardo Palosuelos from Washington County Community Outreach Specialist on recycling skills. And he wants to do, reaching out to Las Casitas for more recycling seminars. He can do 15 to 18 people and do a whole recycling learning opportunities. And also dragged a lot of people over to do a community engagement for our community, for our climate action plan, which was super great. And it was wonderful to have not only Nick Westendorf doing a really amazing job. But our consultants who taught me a lot about our community and have worked very much with our community and know our members very well, our Spanish-speaking community. And so it was fun to have the sticky notes written in both languages and to hear about that. And oh, and then just before the city council, I was doing some reviewing for I'm going to be helping with the hiring process for, I hate to say it, but for the PAB Director. Director Proctor is going to be leaving and it's going to be really hard to choose to replace. But we have a lot of candidates, so it's going to be a little bit of an intensive job, but I'm looking forward to doing it and it's it's a tough goodbye, but it'll be hopefully a very good hello. And then I just want to invite people and remind people that there is a concert coming up on Wednesday at noon at the Lake on the Commons for the new lunchtime series of concerts in the park. And then we will also be doing the bamboo tour coming up this week. I think it's this week, no, maybe next week. But it's before next council, so take a look for that. And finally, we have a PAB meeting. We skipped one, so we have one coming up this Thursday. That's it for me. Thank you. Nice to see everybody.
Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. I might have any meetings over the last two weeks, but I did go to Viva Twelton on Saturday. It sounds like I missed a few of you. We were there at different times. I just want to say great job to everyone who helped put on that wonderful event. It was amazing, great turnout, beautiful weather, just great all around. And I am also going to attend the concert on the Commons on, on Wednesday. So look forward to seeing everybody there. Looking forward to a great turnout to that new time. Excited to see how that goes.
Council Pratt.
Um, I went to a Midwest CIO special meeting for, and it was involving people that live on Killarney, which is one of our only streets that is not have a sidewalk. So their, their, their real issue is they're concerned about the safety for pedestrians, bikes. And there's also a bus stop for children. That's really not the safe location. So they came up with other ideas on how to improve safety and their, Sherilyn kindly is going to arrange so they can meet with Mike McCarthy and discuss their different issues to see what they can do and try to get in place moving forward. Then I went to the Historical Society picnic and boy, in 10 minutes, I got such an education from Roy Smart Nasi on the history of this town. It was amazing. And I went to the concert in the park at Atholotti Park with I'm going to mess this up, Maria, and who though, Allegri. And I found out that unlike me, we have some counselors that really know how to dance. And Saturday I helped out for four hours at Viva Twelton and had a great time. And I did see some counselors there and it looks like more than I saw were there. And both those events, you know, Heidi and Julie just knocked it out of the park as usual. And then I also went to see for a meeting and I, that was a little more involved, so I'm going to save that one for the end of the council meeting.
Councilor Hoyer.
Thank you. I did not have any meetings the last couple of weeks, but I was honored to get to be one of the vendors at Viva Twelton and get to share out the rich work that we've been doing around a survey of our Hispanic community. We had over 225 participants and we're working on next steps to bring in resources into the community, specifically at Stone Ridge. So if you missed our booth, getting to see what the attendees said in the survey or that they are asking us to do as next steps from a grant that they're that we have at Twelton together. I know, sorry, the we is Twelton together. But it really affects a lot of the things that's happening already in our community and our rich engagement. with, around that topic. So anyway, if you want any more information, please reach out, because I'm, I'm not sure who all actually saw and what they did, other than great dancing and great food and a great time.
Counselor Raff.
Yeah, well, I heard I attended the concert on Friday. And it was just really, really awesome, just hanging out with people and, and getting to see people live in person. It was probably the first time that I actually got to see a lot of you in person so in a while. So thank, thanks for all of you who came out and, and had fun. It was really, really, we had a lot of fun. We danced and we enjoyed the music. That was on Friday. And then the Viva Twelton on Saturday was awesome as well. So I was there for the most part all day. And the weather was perfect. I got some feedback for some people. So I can't wait to share the feedback so we can continue to do this. Everyone loved it. I, I don't, you know, the feedback is always to improve and get better. But for, it was just an awesome event. It was my favorite and the highlight of, of the event was the piñatas. And I was freaking out. It was like, we have insurance. But it's just so much fun. Kids love piñatas. And it was, it was great that the police was there to, to just kind of help out with the piñatas. And, and Betsy did a great job coordinating all that. So that was my highlight. I was nervous, but you know, these are kids and they love candy and they'll do anything for candy. So it was fun. So thank you all. And it was good to see some of you. Yeah, at the event. And it was very, very nice. As far as like official meetings, I haven't had any official meetings from the county or from the city. So thank you all.
Counsel President Grimes.
Hello, everybody. Since the last council meeting, I chaired the Architectural Review Board meeting. And we approved a new warehouse development that's going in on Southwest Herman Road. About 113th and Southwest Herman, if you want to be particular. And it's going to be comprised of three different buildings for warehousing and possible light manufacturing. And as similar to the one that we worked on prior ARB meeting, these are enormous structures. These three buildings will end up with a total of 442,000 square feet of warehouse space. So these are enormous developments that are going in. But it shows and most of them are being built on spec. So I think that that really gives you a sense of the confidence in Twelton is a great place to do business. And as a place to invest in up and coming business opportunities. And I thought that it was very nice during this meeting. There's two things I want to touch on. The first is the absolute finesse and experience that the people that are on the ARB board themselves, I mean, we have architects, we have landscape designers. And their areas of expertise that they bring and the suggestions that they make, it just gives to me such a wonderful sense of confidence. I mean, every development that's built here is made better by their input and their recommendations. And it's just really, really great to see. And especially when the landscape architects get involved and they take what is a, you know, a good plan for this development and they take it a step higher with better trees, better pollinators, better native plants. I mean, it's just very, very inspiring to be with that group of people. And I can't tell you how much I've learned just from their input. It's, it's, it's really fantastic. And the second thing that I want to touch on that I think is probably is just as important is the last two developers that have come before the ARB, they have had the most wonderful things to say about city staff. So that always makes me feel great because you know that the people that are working with the city, they're putting in these big developments, they're doing really huge projects that are very complicated. Feel really good about the help that they get, the guidance, the feedback, just the ability to do business with the city. Because I know when we revised codes and we made some changes in different departments over the last probably eight years, six to eight years specifically, you know, the whole idea was to streamline the process, make the city a better place to work and make it a more viable opportunity for businesses to locate here and people to do business here. And it's working. And I just thought the feedback was fantastic and I felt great about that. So.
Thank you for saying that. Can I just interrupt and, and say that that is the Walgrave property and it will take access off of Myceloni. And they're going to be building the signal at 124th and Myceloni. And I will say that it is a credit to our staff because that, the, the two that you're referring to have been very complicated. And our staff have not been, they haven't rolled over. And they have the city's best interests in mind and have pushed the developers. So it's wonderful to hear that, that them say good things because our, our, our staff are committed. But those are very complicated and they do push back.
Oh, absolutely. And there's been special conditions with every one of these developments that we've worked on in the past probably eight months. I mean, and they're expensive. I mean, added architectural touches, different build outs, placements of windows, I mean, a huge upgrade in the plantings and all of that. And I mean, these are expenses that technically, you know, if you want to go through the letter of the code, the developers don't technically need to do because everything they submit is that meets code or just a little above. And you know, staff is asking them to go yet a huge step above. So that's a lot of extra time and money. And they're all happy to do it and still full of, you know, glowing feedback. So yeah, I think that's a great, great.
All right, given the time we have left, I'm just going to talk about two things. One is the Washington County Mayor's Lunch was held in Beaverton on July 8th. Alan Evans from Helping Hands Reentry Outreach Center presented. They operate in five counties. They're a reentry program that just, they're just not a homeless shelter program. They have full wraparound services, employment services. They're looking to open a Washington County location for approximately 100 or so folks. They have two locations they're looking at right now. So more to come there because they want to bring their program to Washington County. What makes them different is they are very data driven and they have all the statistics to prove how well they do in their job versus other traditional programs where we're just sheltering and that's, you know, enabling the person to get off the street. And then I want to big shout out to Betsy Roof for doing a great job at emceeing at Viva. And also for Julie Liddeman and Heidi Marks for helping out. And all the students of Metcha, the Metcha volunteers, you know, made it all happen. So I want to very much appreciate everybody's efforts there. I just want to mention, I meant, I met, talked with Diane Bonica at the end. Rotary brought 1,200 books to give out. They had 15 at the end. Yeah, so Rotary did an outstanding job. Diane got those books out there and that's tremendous that she did that. It just went home with one bin. It was phenomenal. So I want to very much thank Rotary for doing that and getting books out to the community. So with that, we have about a minute left. So I'll go ahead and close work session. And we'll reconvene in about a minute or two, like a quick potty break and we'll reconvene at 7:01. See you in a little bit.